To that, so basically would train two for that price versus double that. Not a hundred percent guarantee, but believe we'd be able to do that. And then secondly, uniforms expensive, the it's all safety gear. And not that all most of our uniform is, but it's a different type of safety gear. So for example, your boots are going to run you about five hundred dollars a pair. So again, believe at least to start this unit and get for our first couple of years with that asset forfeiture money will cover all of that. There'll be a little bit of cost going down the road to maintain that. And right now, I believe that if if I let's just say I had to take some money out of a current budget, I could do that out of our uniform budget. We look every way we can to save money and do different things. And so if I had to take those two items, sir, out of our current budget, I could do that without with a minimal impact to us.
I guess staffing, are you are you staffed currently to cover the unit or would these be new positions that need to be created?
No, we're staffed currently, this is taking out of the forty sworn officers that we have. We have two that are in field training right now that soon will all indications they're doing great right now, that they will be on their own soon. And that would free up one additional officer that we would utilize for this unit.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, as far as the maintenance on the bikes, we don't have a a Harley dealer here, so how how would maintenance work if a bike goes down here in town and we can't it can't be driven to the metroplex?
Right, so they'll come get it. It's a, I mean, it's a minimal fee, I've seen between thirty-five and seventy-five dollars, but they'll come get it and take it back in services. Right now, there's only one dealership that does that, Longhorn and Police Motorcycles, it's part of the Longhorn Harley-Davidson dealership. And I think I mentioned it earlier, but they currently service eighty-six police departments out of the metroplex. And so in looking at those numbers, it it seems quite a deal. What I what I've experienced too is you think smaller departments, they really want to take care of them because they know we're not the Dallas, the Fort Worth's, and that that we are strapped in different ways. And that's the feeling that I get from this dealership and the work that we've done. Yes, sir.
Just one question, Bob, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
If the the committee and the council go along with this, are we committing ourselves to a long-term issue? Are we talking about short-term? Because you're using the dollars, you know, in effect that that this doesn't come out of general fund or anything like that, but are we committing ourselves to a long-term years' worth of maintaining this and?
No, so the federal government asked us to look at approximately two years before you just add something, a new program that you've started related to that. And so let's say in two years, we didn't want to continue this program and we sell the bicycles, sell the equipment, I mean, the motorcycles, sell their equipment, sell everything, then that money would go back into our asset forfeiture account to be utilized for something else. And so and not necessarily complete hard and fast on the two years, it's more of a pretty serious recommendation related to that from the federal government?
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
You have a mind to increase the size of the number of motorcycles in the future?
Hard to say, sir. You know, it's, I think, we look at the successes, we, you know, we look at statistics more than a baseball team, a pro baseball team does, major league. And so I think you we just have to look at our return on investment and values, but it would be it would be be pretty difficult to do that anytime soon with our staffing levels. Yes, sir.
Will that help with hiring or will it do anything with with possible new hires in the future?
You know, there's quite a few officers at the police department that love motorcycles. So I I think it'll be quite the competition for the one vacant slot should this be approved. And so anytime you you show how you engage the public and you have opportunities outside of just one or two for your size department, such as motorcycle SWAT, you know, traffic, firearms training, different things like that, it always helps recruit.
Any other questions? Okay, well, I'd like to make a motion then that we approve the utilization expenditure of federal assets forfeiture funding to create the SPD motorcycle unit.
Second.
We moved and seconded, all of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, it's a time, we're going to with that motion carrying, we're going to recess the council meeting or excuse me, committee meetings and go to the special council meeting where we'll hear from Mr. Novy again.
Okay, the committee, Public Health and Safety Committee passed a motion to approve the utilization expenditure of federal assets forfeiture funding to create the SPD motorcycle unit. And I would like to make a motion that the council do the same.
Have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, second, proceed to vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much, appreciate you.
Thank you.
With that, the special council meeting will end, you know, we don't have any further, so we're going to now go to the special to the committee meetings, back to Tourism, Visitors Bureau, Leanne Durfee.
Thank you, Mayor. We have Julie Smith is going to come up and the Main Street Advisory Board met on March twenty-third and voted to recommend the Western Heritage Board be reinstated and Julie has some info on that.
Yes, they met last month and voted to move it forward to council committee as home of the cowboy capital of the world, the the Hall of Fame, Walk of Fame, and the Charlton rodeo team, which is the winningest rodeo team in the country. We all firmly believe that we want to continue and honor the work that's been done by the board previously and wanted to bring it to council for you all.
So we Julie and I have met with Jason today about the differences. The way it was originally put together, there was a lot of jumbledness and a lot of, I guess that's not really a word, but still, there was just ordinances of for the amount of people and then changing that ordinance and back and forth. And so I think that we can agree that we would like to have a five-person board. Yes, okay. And that would alternate off in two-year increments. And we will have those names to you for in the main meeting.
So the committee today is to whether we recommend to the council the reestablishment of the Western Heritage Board, which is primarily responsible for the things that are across the street over here in the Cowboy Plaza, we call it the Plaza, and everything to recognize. And if you've gone over and looked at any of the plaques that are on the in the sidewalks over there, they're hard to read, too. And the second thing is, we've had so many new rodeo performers, cowboys, and and that have, I mean, they're world champions now, and they're not even being honored. I mean, we we haven't done anything with that.
I heard from one of the previous committee members said that they'd love to see it finished and go all the way around and and add the new ones in and and continue honoring the ones that are still making history on the national stage.
Okay.
Julie and I both have spoke to several of the the members that were on there originally and and just people that were very involved with it, and they were all very excited about it. So I would like to see that we start this back.
Need a motion?
Yes, sir, I would make the motion that we reinstate, reinstate the Western Heritage Board.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, so that will go to council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And that's all I have today, thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Basket.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've got the Parks and Leisure Services Services Committee called to order here. Looks like we have all our members up for line. And what we're going to do today, everybody should have got a copy of the Steamville Parks and Recs master plan and their email. What we're looking today is for to approve this, take it to full council. Darren is up here at the podium, ready to answer any questions y'all might have. But if y'all had a chance to look at it, it goes into great detail of what we would plan to see the our parks do in the future. And there are, it's it's a it's a hefty document, for sure. I know that we did have Mitch come and speak to us, was it about two months ago, I think he came and did his first draft with us. I know we had some questions in and he addressed them in the plan. So Darren will answer any questions y'all might have right now.
Y'all are easy today.
Darren, could you start at the beginning and go through?
We can go page by page if you want to, but I think there'll be some math.
You gotta watch for this right here.
Yeah.
I get to adjourn this meeting when I want to.
I'll sit down whenever the mayor tells me to. The only thing that you're going to see that really is missing from from previous editions of this is every previous edition has had a very, there's a map that hangs up on the wall of downtown park. We do have something similar in here, but there's three of them. There's a previous edition that some of the work has been done. There is Mitch's edition, which is kind of a, it's it's a very pie in the sky, if we could blow this thing up and start over, which everybody would love to see, like, right, let's just start from scratch and build it. And then there's mine, which is a very pragmatic approach to things that I think we can feasibly do for a reasonable amount of time. And so those are the things that are going to be different from a previous plan where it's like you're you're looking at these pretty maps and pretty pictures, and those things are great, we already have some of that stuff. I think we're going to do things as we can free up money and as we know things fit where they fit, what the previous thing, what the previous maps is like, we're going to try to fit those things in where we can. And I think we have to be pragmatic about it, knowing that, you know, often a single vein, it'd be great if you could turn those things around and make them into a wagon wheel. I don't know the pain for your buck which was worth it to turn them around and try to do that. And so leave the pieces where they are, then we try to figure out how to put the puzzle back together with new fences and prettier things and sidewalks and stuff like that. And so there's three things and there's three different images you can look at of the park. And I think the approach is going to be to take pieces of each one of those puzzles and figure out how they fit together. And so it just looks a little different than it may have in the past, but it also outlines a lot of things that we need to do. You know, it could have mine all the way down to trash cans and picnic tables and things like that, trail work that we need to do, trail extensions, just neighborhood parks, where we're short, where we have a shortage of parks and neighborhoods that we're not really accessible to, stuff like that, things that we do need to look at, and we've talked about neighborhood parks and really having more access for children in different areas. So we looked at all those things, and I think it outlines all those things for us, maybe just without the the same pretty picture that we've always gotten in the past, the things that my boss worked, but I want this to be a working document we're looking at, trying to trying to mark some things off this list and get through them, so.
Justin, any questions?
So Darren, in that in the presentation, where is the the priority list? Sorry.
The, I believe it's in the President's Section Eight or the Implementation Plan on Ten.
Where is that at?
On page ten?
No, Section Ten, so it's going to be deeper, it's going to be deeper into it and show you some of the, like, specific stuff to to each park. And there are sections in there that are also going to show you what you do and don't have in every every park.
Oh, I see.
Like Dog Park, you can pretty much go down the line, and Dog Park's going to be a no on every one of those, so we know that's an area where we lack, and then we're working towards some solutions to that.
Going backward.
City Park, it's going to outline things like we know we have coming up of all field projects, so we're going to be doing NYC Three to add that. And and we also know we're going to apply football field, so we know those things are coming up.
It is.
And.
Eighty-six, age eighty-six, ninety.
Bob, you have any questions?
Yeah, I'm fine.
In your opinion, Darren, where do we, obviously, I mean, with the input that we had from the community, and I went to one of those meetings and everything like that, there wasn't a lot of input, there wasn't a lot of people there and everything like that, but it's why we hired a consultant and and to work with you in drawing this up. Does this get us where we to where we have first-class parks in ten years, fifteen years?
The document gives us a little bit of a roadmap, but gets us to where we have first-class parks.
Does it really give us the roadmap, in your opinion?
Gives us a roadmap, it gives us things to look at. People ask me all the time what I'm focused on right now, and I'll I'll tell them, I'll just be real honest, you know, I'm focused on City Park, it's our biggest park, it's our most utilized park, it's very heavy usage. And so my most of my days spent figuring out how to put City Park together in a way that people can see a difference when they come down there. And this will help us outline some of this stuff, it helps me, you know, come to council when I need to ask for things, like, there's certain things we're going to need in the park, it probably outlines them in these plans. And so it gives us a roadmap, but, you know, to really get the first-class parks in the lawn, it's just a lot of head-down, hard work, you know, taking some things away that we don't need. And you'll see some of that when you go in the parks now, there's some old wooden bollards coming out of the ground that really just don't do anything for us. So those things are starting to come together, but there's eleven guys that do that work, and I mean, it's it just takes takes a lot of time, and we're head-down every day, that's what they're working on. So they were building fence all day today, they'll probably be milling all day tomorrow. And so I think you'll see those changes come about. And I think between the three different versions of pictures you see in here, we have a roadmap for what we want a park to look like. You know, it's just a matter of us getting things to look the way they should look and educating our community on what they should look like, what they should expect in a park. I don't know that everybody knows what a park should look like when they walk into it, but I know what a park should look like, and now it's going to help make sure the park looks like that.
How many help you define that? Or maybe not define it, but communicate that?
To the public?
Yeah.
Man, I think little things like what we've done recently, it's not a little thing, it was a hundred and sixty thousand dollar addition to our park, but just seeing a playground that looks different than any playgrounds looked here in the past has educated our public a lot on. I don't think they're ever going to want to see five bar in a playground again, they're going to want turf inserts, and you just see the difference in the way, the difference in the way the park is utilized at that point. So you never have seen a mom sitting down in the middle of one of our playgrounds before with their kids. If you go to our parks on the weekends now, there's there's parents sitting on the turf playing with their kids. And so it's just beginning to piece that thing together, so people have higher expectations. I think, and David, David and I have talked about this, the park, Terrell Park right there looks the same as it's always looked, kind of with just different playgrounds. No, no grass, just kind of dirt, and everybody's like, oh, it's always been dirt, it's fine. My job is to make, it's not fine, and it shouldn't look like that, and we're going to make sure it doesn't. And so we've been raising money to put irrigation in that park, to put grass in the park, and it really look, everything I do is about elevating the expectation everybody should have, so I've got to elevate everything we do. And that's what we do, that's what we're trying to do every day. So if we, every little thing we elevate, I think sets an expectation that's a little higher, and shows people, people come in all the time and say stuff now, that fence y'all did looks really good, or I love that playground, or whatever. So I think people will get a little bit higher expectation of what a park should look like, which puts the pressure on us to keep that up.
Any other questions? With that, I'm going to go ahead and make the motion to send the Parks Rec and Paul, the Steamville Parks and Recreation Master Plan to full council for approval. I got a first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. And before Darren leaves, I want to I want to go over a couple of things with SPAR. First of all, you can tell the passion that Darren has for for SPAR, but I'm going to share two thousand twenty-two numbers for two thousand twenty-three numbers, just for SPAR baseball and softball. In two thousand twenty-two, we had forty-six total teams. In two thousand twenty-three, we have seventy-three total teams. That's fifty-six SPAR teams with seventeen out-of-town teams coming into play. We would have more out-of-town teams coming into play because they want to play, we just don't have the room for them right now. In two thousand twenty-two, we had four hundred and seventy-two total participants in SPAR baseball and softball. In two thousand twenty-three, we have six hundred and seventeen. In two thousand twenty-three, since Darren and his staff implemented the sponsorship programs, we have thirty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars worth of sponsorships as part as well. So Darren, thank you very much.
Yep.
You're doing a great job, and it shows, so thank you.
Appreciate you.
Mayor, with that, that concludes the Parks and Leisure Services.
Thanks, Darren. Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. Development Services Committee has one item to discuss and make a recommendation to the council on, and that has to do with the comprehensive plan and setting up the comprehensive plan committee. The the consultants, the Lionheart consultants that this council has contracted with to do the comprehensive fair land use plan, will be working with at least two different committees. One is going to be a staff level committee, and the other is going to be a citizens committee. And the citizens committee, if you look at your staff report, would involve people from a variety of different areas. This, they're just suggesting this is eight to twelve, we may end up with fifteen or thereabouts. But the, I'd like for the committee to consider, if you would, recommending the establishment of this committee, the Comprehensive Plan Committee Advisory Committee, to the full council at that council meeting. This will give us about two weeks or so to make recommendations as to who should be on that committee. In other words, come up with names and whatnot, and I know the staff are putting it out right now to ask for volunteers, and also gives us an opportunity to do some recruiting over the next few weeks, and then come back to the council with not only asking the council to approve the committee, but having the names that go with that committee. Our key thing is that they've asked that the the Lionheart has asked that we have the committee in place by the end of May, for sure, but hopefully we'll get it in ahead of that. So are there any questions from the committee members? Okay, then, could it, we have a, I'd like to have a motion that we recommend to the council the approval of a committee for the next, at the next meeting, to the council.
Mr. Chairman, we recommend council the creation of a co-op plan advisory committee.
Second. Okay, with motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, post. Thank you, Mayor. This will come before the council as as a recommendation from the Development Services Committee for the next meeting, and we will, we will also have names at that time.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. That concludes our.
Mr. Reese is not available tonight, so I'm going to turn the nominations to Sarah.
So in your package, you have the.
You what? I'm sorry?
I was going to say Sarah. That's all I was going to say.
I got my instructions.
So in your package, you have an updated council rules of procedure document, there's been two updates, just changing the regular business meeting times, it was written incorrectly. So that's corrected, and then correcting the committee meeting times, just to reflect what we actually do. So this is in preparation for the new council, to make sure everything is outlined correctly.
What was that?
So it had regular meetings at the first and third Tuesday of each month at five-thirty, and committee meetings, there wasn't a time. So I just changed it to the first Tuesday is regular meeting and the third Tuesday is committee meeting.
Don't they not turn over you at this point?
All right. Now I'm all confused.
Don't be too confused.
Can I get a motion to approve the council rules of procedures updates, please?
Make the motion that we approve the rules of procedure.
Second.
Update.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, the approval of the council rules and procedure updates will move forward to council for full approval, and that concludes the nominations committee, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, sir. Mr. McClinton.
So call Public Works Committee together to order, and we're going to talk about the street improvement projects for the for the coming year, and Nick is going to let us know what the rules are.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you. So this committee and this council has gotten very serious over the last year, year and a half, about brick street improvements from Graham passing ordinances. And so on August second of last year, we engaged as a city, Jacob and Martin, to design two more brick sections around the courthouse on College and Belknap. One week after that happened, a water line was inadvertently damaged by the gas company, which resulted in an extreme base failure in one section, a block, just two blocks away from the courthouse. So we pivoted and came back to the committee and the council and got a recommendation to design those two blocks to match up to the courthouse, and that's College Street from Barton up to Columbia and Belknap. So what we'd like to recommend is pursuing the project to replace the brick pavement in those two blocks from Barton to Belknap on College Street. Now, because the gas company's been such a good partner to work with, they actually wrote a check to the city for a hundred and forty-four thousand nine hundred dollars to offset the cost of that brick pavement and base repair. And that's based upon the cost of a contractor coming back in, coming back in and just replacing the brick that was there, that we would typically do for a pothole or utility patch, that sort of thing. Now, we've got one point six million dollars approximately allocated to capital improvements for pavement repair this year. And I'll tell you that the opinion of probable cost from our engineer to to repair those two blocks that I just mentioned on College is just over one point four million dollars. And it pains me to say it, but I'll tell you, I think that estimate is high. I think we're going to come in well under that number. And so what I'd like to do is get direction from this committee to go and bid that project, advertise it, and get bids to bring back to you. In the meantime, we have the Lockhart project that's been included in the budget, it's advertising, matter of fact, we had a pre-bid meeting on it today, it'll open up on the twenty-fifth, and we'll bring that back to the May council meeting. When we bring that project back, we'll know how much money we've got left to pursue the Brick Street project, and then what money we'll have after that to pursue a chip seal and regular maintenance project. That's a lot, but let me know what questions you have. We, I've got a map attached to the staff report, if that'll help.
Want to mention one thing, and we talked about it this morning. He ends that with an asphalt chip seal project, I end that with, remember, we also have a parking lot downtown we'll be taking possession of, that we'll need to do something with, and so we'll need to make some decisions with that leftover money on which direction that that needs to go, once he gets all those prices worked out.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Just out of curiosity, Nick, the hundred and forty-four thousand nine hundred, was that the hundred percent of the cost of our estimate, or was that a percentage based?
So it was based upon the number that we got, so we have an on-call contract to come in and do brick street repairs when we have potholes and main bricks and utility repairs. And they gave us a cost per. And they gave us a cost per square yard unit, unit price. And so in lieu of trying to work out what the actual cost would be, breaking that down into base and placing brick back, so we don't know that actual cost until we bid it out, we use that unit price. And that way Atmos can, can walk away and everybody can still be friends, and they acknowledge that, hey, we, we made a mistake, but we want to make it right.
And it was 100% of that unit cost?
It was 100% of that unit cost, yes, sir. Maybe that's what you're asking me, but.
Either way, we got, we got there.
Yes, sir.
Nick, do you know, do you have any, I guess, what was the opinion of probable cost for the bids for Lock, for Lockhart that will be opened soon?
Lockhart, we got an updated opinion today, it was just over $400,000, but remember, we have that AFA with Tech Dot to, to carry the majority of that. As a matter of fact, it's 100% paid for by federal and state dollars, up to, I believe, $330,000. So even with, even with the estimate for the Brick Street, I think that we're going to be well within reason. I think we're going to have plenty of funds to, to do that and then take care of either an asphalt chip seal or parking lot project, or both, or some combination there.
Any other questions for Nick?
How will this put us on the schedule with regard to Belknap and College, the rest of, I mean, the, the Belknap here on the west side of the square and the College?
So, great question.
Straight on the south side?
When, when we were given direction to go for that design, we have the design put together for that, however, I know that there's been some work downtown that talked about the walkability and doing away with parking downtown. And so I wanted to make sure the council committee had an opportunity to have that discussion. In the meantime, I would recommend, let's go pursue and get these blocks done, just off the square.
So when Nick and I talked about this, we, going into the comp plan update, we, we just received the downtown plan, but one of the things about the Lionheart group was they have that historical preservation aspect.
That's right.
And so we talked about, well, what if there are changes that we want to do downtown along those two streets after we see the comp plan? It just made more sense to pursue these that would be out of that, out of that target.
I think that's correct. I think that's, that's right. It makes a lot more sense here to do these because that street is really in bad shape down there.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And it's not going to improve. It's going to get a lot worse.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Nick? One is pleasure of the committee.
Chair, I'd make the motion that we direct staff to send to bid for reconstruction of Barton to Columbia and Columbia to Belknap.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? If you don't, move to vote, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That will move to council with a positive recommendation. Thank you, sir. Mayor, that ends the Public Works Committee.
Thank you very much. It is 6:11, we have no more business, so the committee meeting will stand adjourned.